Okay, it is Tuesdays, November 6th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. I'd like to give a short invocation. Father, please give us guidance, wisdom, and discernment in addressing the issues before us. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGarren?
Here.
Trustee Merrill?
Here.
Trustee Nelson?
Here.
Trustee Noonan?
Here.
Trustee Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. All righty then, next is Review and Improvements from Regular Board of August 2nd.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second. Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Is any additions, corrections, or amendments?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, item three is comments from the floor. Which is the opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda? Is there any of the residents here that aren't really on the agenda that have a... It looks like everybody here has got a purpose, so we'll move on to item four. Introduction of the new Fire Chief, Drew Spielman, is here. And Drew, the podium is yours, and welcome to...
Thank you.
The Hudson Joint Area Fire.
Yes, very happy to be here. I'll just give you a little history on myself, so I've actually played Scott June 30th, so I've got a couple months under my belt. Things are going very well. I originally was born and raised in Monominee, and then went to fire school, got my degree in that, and was hired by the City of Green Bay. And I spent 23 years in the City of Green Bay as a firefighter. When I re... didn't retire. When I accepted the position out here, I was a battalion chief, and then took the position out here. So, the main goal of myself and my wife was to get back to this side of the state. Obviously, growing up in Monominee, that was a huge deal. My wife's parents live in Ham Lake, so we're exactly 40 minutes between both of them. So, good or bad, I guess I haven't decided that yet now, that I'm back? Um, no. But I do have a little bit of ties to the area. My great-grandparents on my dad's side actually lived in Hudson. And then, my grandpa's brother, I guess, which would make my dad's uncle, I have my great-uncle, however that works, lived in Hudson their whole life, Merlyn Orland Spielman. In fact, Myrtle still lives on St. Crye Street, in the original house, so I think she's 96, 97 now. So, I do have family in North Hudson also. So, yeah, it's a great opportunity to get back, and I'm absolutely enjoying every minute of it, being back in the side of the state. And everybody always asks if my Vikings are a Packers fan, and I always answer with neither, I'm a Bears fan.
(laughing).
So, oddly enough, I'm not going to win this fight with anybody over here, so... So, that's a little bit about me, but no, I'm very happy, and like I mentioned, a lot of people, if there's ever any questions or concerns, or anything you know, that you want to see from the fire department, or I just have whatever, feel free to give me a call, stop in. I absolutely love getting on the public and just, you know, have a conversation, so...
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay close.
Yeah, you might as well stay close. Chief, item five is Citizen Recognition Emergency Call to Prevent Fire Damage. Discussion only.
All right, so Chief Spielman and I have a couple of recognitions that we'd like to do tonight. I'll give you a little bit of background, but I'd like the three young men to come stand up here by me, if you would, please, so that you can watch their faces as I describe some of the things that they did. So, you guys can stand right over here next to me, if you don't mind? Perfect. So, I'll read kind of what happened first, but on Wednesday, July 27th, at 4:35 PM, I was dispatched to the 700 block of Fox Tree Lane North for a woodpile on fire and possibly spreading. Upon my arrival, I observed three young men assisting an adult male with getting a hose pulled over to the area near the woodpile, which was burning hot and had scorched the grass in several directions. I used that hose to put water on the fire until Hudson Fire and St. Joe Fire could arrive to do the rest of the job, because as a fire... as an officer, that's... I do some things to get things started, but I definitely don't have the techniques that they do. So, we got that started? Okay, perfect. Maybe I'll get an award from the fire department for that use of my hose. Once the fire department arrived, I spoke to these young men, who explained that they had been riding their bikes past the residence, saw the flames, attempted to contact the homeowners, and then eventually worked with a neighbor across the street who couldn't be here tonight to call 911 and get fire and emergency services headed in that direction. So, due to their observations and their quick actions, they prevented further damage not only to that particular property, but also nearby properties, as the grass... the fire had spread through the grass toward two different other homes and fences and whatnot. So, Fire Chief Spielman and I would like to present each of the boys with a certificate of recognition, to thank them for their actions, and to acknowledge the fact that they did the right thing on that day, and it's something that we want to make sure that we show our positive appreciation for that. So, I have a certificate of recognition for each one of the boys, and a plastic badge that I'll give to each one of them. And then, we do... there's... two of them are brothers, so I have magnets, one for each family, that talk about emergency dial 911 and when to do that. So, we've got all of that for them tonight, and I just wanted to have you all help me in giving them a round of applause. Anyone have a speech that they prepared tonight, or...
You did?
(laughing).
That's true, and it is somebody's birthday today, too, so they took time out of their schedule to come up and celebrate that with us. All right, Landon?
I'll just echo what the chief said, too. I think it's really important in a day and age like this, when people choose not to get involved, you know, and they... the kids roll by, and they saw there was an issue, and they stopped to actually offer help and do the right thing, so I think this is a lot for them. Very proud of them, and they did prevent probably a lot more damage than could have been done, so that was very good on their part.
Absolutely.
Chief, do you have the names of all of them again? Can you say it?
Would you guys like to introduce yourselves?
Please do.
And what your names are?
My name is Landon.
And what's your last name?
Young.
All right, Landon Young.
Jack Young.
My name is Ellen Bruce.
All right, and they are all residents of North Hudson, so...
Thank you, guys.
Two of them are brothers that lived close by, and you were up driving, hanging out with them in the area, right? Very good.
Thank you.
All right, any questions you have for us, or...
No.
Perfect, all right, well, thanks for coming tonight.
Outstanding, thank you, guys.
Yeah, nice job.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, man.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, let's see, item six is Recommended Appointment of Linda...
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Take care, Drew. Always a pleasure. Okay, back to recommended appointment of Linda Sudikamp to fill the position of Board of Zoning Appeals. Discussion and approval requested. Just a quick back on, one of the members of the Board of Appeals is also on plan, and that's not a good mix, so I'm taking Ryder off the plan, and he's just going to be on Board... on zoning board, so he's just going to be on this. So, Linda volunteered to sit in with... on that group, and I hope that she warrants approval.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions?
Just if there's any information about why you selected her, President? And or how she was recruited, or why she was interested?
I have this list of spots that I try to fill, and usually if somebody, you know, says, "Yeah, I'd be willing to look at that," and you're in. So, I mean, you know, it's a board that doesn't meet an awful lot. Of course, that said, I think the first night when I talked to a friend of mine into it, I think they met like three times that year, and he says, "Yeah, it never meets." So, yeah, but this is, you know, usually hopefully we don't have that many issues, and it's, you know, it's always great to have people say, "Yeah, I'll step up," and, you know, especially unpaid meetings and positions and stuff like that. It's nice to have people involved.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the appointments, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, must be nearly deer hunting season, so River Valley Deer Management Annual Contract is up, and for the 2020/2022/2023 River Valley season, so I see the leader of the Band of Mary Bow Hunters is here. And Lon, would you like to step up in case folks have any questions, or... and I'm sure there'll be one at least about how's the harvest has been, but let's see if we can get a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I'd second that. Noonan?
Amy? Okay.
Any questions, still?
How do you say your last name again?
Feiya.
Feiya, yep.
Feiya.
Thanks.
Rhymes with nothing, so that's...
(laughing). Okay.
I have a couple questions.
How many years now this has been going on?
You know, what is this, nine, I think?
I feel like every year we ask that.
Right, and I think it's nine, I think it's nine. So, yeah, it's been, you know, we haven't had any problems.
As long as I've been here.
I think it's at least 10.
Is it 10, you think?
Because I've been here over nine, and it started before me.
Okay.
How many deer did you harvest last year?
We harvested nine last year from North Hudson.
And we have a capacity of 15 to 22 in the contract this year?
Yeah, we could do more, you know, it's just a matter of what presents and in the right scenario, you know? So, hopefully we'll do... we considered that successful, though.
In previous years, you had you...
We've been up to 11, 12, yeah. It just... one of our stands, we're over... close to Starwood over in that area, in the little park there, and we got moved out of that area, so we've got to find a new place, so... They cut down all the trees, that's all they...
Oh, you see.
Not much, does it?
So, no problems, but we try to avoid problems, and we don't really have any issues, you know, we... because if no one sees us, that's all the better. Then there is no issues.
I thought your presentation last time you were here was very thorough, and the write-ups very professional, and it seems really safe. Your insurance seems more than adequate, and so, yeah, I think it sounds like a great way to deal with the situation.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one more. Is this the same crew that we had last year, that we approved last year, the same participants?
Yeah, they are the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lon.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the contracts, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item is just hunter applications for the North Hudson Deer Program. It's basically informational, so that we know who's involved in it, so there's no... we don't need any action on that.
Yep, we do, actually.
We do?
Yep, there's issues.
And I move to approve the applications of Lon Feiya, C.R. Hackworthy, Harvey Baird, Bradley Coulter, and Lonnie Feiya for participation in the Village of North Hudson Deer Management Program during the 2022/2023 hunting season.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Amy? I'm sorry, I didn't read that very closely, so... and most of those guys, I think, have been here in the years past, especially, obviously Lon has, but... and, yeah, the chief, they've got great record, I mean, there've been no issues with them, I don't believe, so... So, without... if there's any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the hunter applications, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Closed? Thank you. Item eight, Resolution for Exemption from County Library Tax. Discussion, possible action.
So, we gave the city until today to let us know if they would let us out before the end of... by the end of this year, 2022, and they did not respond. So, as of now, we will stay in. We're part of the joint library for one more year through 2023. We'll pay the three-year average for next year, and then we'll be out 12/31 of '23. There's nothing to do on this item.
Thank you. Okay, item nine.
Melissa, did we do the resolution before?
Yes, we did it last month. I just put it on in case we heard from it by today, we would have had to withdraw it.
You're right, yep.
But it'll stay in place.
Okay, item four is... or nine is kind of informational, because there's been questions, a lot of questions about, well, what happened to the money, or it's happening to the money that was left over from St. Crye EMS when they were dissolved. And I did put together a little timeline, because, you know, there's... we always get conflicting information from the somebody going south of us, and I just wanted to kind of clear up some of that, I hope. And I said, ever since this has been disbanded, there's been questions on dispersment of the remaining funds, and we've been having that discussion for a long time, and there was... well, there was different excuses of why it wasn't being dispersed, and then on March 21st of this year, the city council proposed transferring the balance, you know, to the Fire Department Capital Assets Fund, which would go toward funding like a new truck, which they're going to be in line for in the next couple of years, and new trucks are... they're over seven, you know, over... close three-quarter of a million and up, so, you know, we thought, you know, with... if we all pooled our funds, that $700,000 that's in that... left in that fund could be used to really diffuse the cost on the partners and on the city. If they, you know, would get that done, they approved it unanimously to approach the partners to see if we were interested in pooling that money. In April, April 21st, Troy agreed to, you know, at their meeting, they agreed to okay the money to the fire fund in Town of Hudson on May 3rd, and the Village of North Hudson, we did it on May 5th. Now, Hudson created and sent intergovernmental agreement for partners to sign shortly after we all agreed to it. All members signed and sent the agreement to the city in July. We never received anything back from the city that they were in agreement, but on August 15th of this year, the city council meeting Hudson voted unanimous to keep the over $700,000 in their... for their general fund, and not to transfer to the joint fire cap assets fund, a proposal that they initiated. Now, we're not exactly sure why the whole council in five months went from being in favor of putting the money in the truck fund or the cap asset fund, to voting all against the going that direction. And really, the only thing we've been able to come up with that's happened in that time is that, well, the partners all kind of voted to get out of the public, you know, the joint library, and I'm not saying that's the reason they did it, but it looks a little, you know, period... it makes... it's curious to me. So, I just thought that folks should know that, you know, we tried, you know, to help him to use the funds the best that we could, but Hudson thinks that they can, you know, I guess, I don't know if they need the money, I guess, so that's just, you know, just a little background on what's going on with that. You know, you can go back and look at the, you know, like the Hudson meeting for... on their board meetings and stuff where they voted this way, and it's, I don't know, it's... I just haven't been able to figure out what's happening. So, that's my spiel. Anybody have questions or comments?
So, when the partnership was dissolved, because we switched to a different EMS?
Correct.
And was there any sort of agreement about the funds, and if it was proportionally owned by the joint partners, or is there anything... because I'm, you know, in the documentation that's in the board packet, is the agreement that we thought was going to happen, that didn't.
Right.
So, was there any contingency, or is there an agreement in the last minutes of that meeting, or something that we have to go on, about how much of this is... belongs to us, or did it literally belong to the city?
No, the... all the partners had a percentage that we paid to the city for our portion of the EMS, you know, we were in for, you know, up around $90,000 a year, and 85, 90, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so...
That's what we paid a year.
You know, so the person... also, we were asking and expected it was out of that, the big pie that we would get our percentages, you know, we weren't asking for anything more than that. And, you know, granted, it wouldn't have been much of a, you know, it's a decent, you know, would be obviously a decent chunk of money, but, you know, I... to see that they're going to need a new truck in a couple of years, you know, of all the partners, like, agreed that, yeah, this was... this was the best use of the money to help diffuse the cost down the line. So, yeah, I don't know what to... I don't get... I mean, I really am confused on what, you know, why they changed their mind on this, because obviously the money is supposed to be dispersed upon, I don't know, was it 2017 agreement, maybe?
I think she's asking if there was anything on our contract stating where that money was supposed to go.
Well, it was in the 2017 agreement, but then strangely, it was not... and it specifically stated that the amount, or I mean, the percentages or whatever, that it would be dispersed. In 2018, it was strangely left out of the contract. But, you know, right at that time, there was discussion with Lakeview, so that could have had some influence or whatever, but, no, it was... it's in the older contract that is there. You've got a chance to look today, Paul.
I think we have a closed session item later on, that we can talk in more detail about that, I think.
Okay, yeah. No, I just, you know, I really just thought that, you know, with anything that we've been dealing with lately, it's just, people aren't getting all the information, and I'd like to... I'd like to share what I know and what's been going on. It's not like all of a sudden this just popped up two, three years after the deal. So, we'll go... I think we'll move on to the next item, and so we can... we'll deal with that in closed session. All right, next is I update by trustees Nelson and Noonan regarding the Tressel Bridge property.
I didn't miss the meeting, I had a tree fall on our clubhouse.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, Kirk was unable to attend, he had a bit of an emergency there at the business, and so, the main activity we did at last meeting was sort of a visioning exercise for the various members of the group to share what they were thinking it might look like, and to start to talk about getting some sort of a statement about it. So, that took quite a bit of time. We talked about who might participate, what activities, why, how we connect with various people, why it might be important, benefits various governments involved, and then we started working on a vision statement. We're going to continue with that. The other thing that came up that might be of relevance to us is the prior meeting, it was brought up, there might be another opportunity for a TAP grant this fall, and if there is, it is really only available for communities 4,000 and under, so we would be the only one in the group that could possibly get that. And I don't remember if it was trustee Nelson, or if it was someone else in the team, or the group that said that might be something that, oh, if we got that, we might be able to use it for signage, or paint, or marking, or something along the road, if and when this trail does go through, to connect the actual trail to the county trail north of here. So, that's just an update on that, nothing has happened yet. I don't know who would write that, if we would have assistance from someone on our group, but we can kind of keep abreast of that. And then the other thing is Mark Garrity had met again with the possible buyer and their attorney for the property. There's an offer in, as we talked about last month, still confidential, as far as who those people are and what they're looking at. It has been brought up several times that they have met... supposedly, they told him they met with the village, so several times, leaders, I don't know who that is. Kirk and I knew nothing about that, so we don't know what that means, or I don't...
That comes out of Hudson a lot, that they met with the...
I don't know. I don't know, but I said, plus, if we don't know anything about it. Anyway, so I just thought I'd bring that up, and then we're going to continue to meet on the fourth Monday of each month for the indefinite future to continue working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business from the board or staff, and the first item, of course, is president's comments, and the only thing I have is I'd like to thank, you know, and everyone, thank Tom Mitchell. He's been a longtime resident of North Hudson, and he's served in the Plan Commission for 17 years, I believe, and has done an excellent job, and he will be moving out of the village, so I just want to make sure that we... I'd like to thank him for his service, and I wish him the best. I'm sorry he's moving out of North Hudson, but, you know, people move on. So, thank you, Tom, and I hope you have a great time. Okay, Melissa?
Nothing for me.
All right, let's see, now, let's go with... Plan Commission Recommendations Chair Update, Paul, you get anything since...
Yeah, I can talk about that. Both the applicants came to the Plan Commission meeting. There was a lengthy discussion, I think it was a real good discussion, about the status of the building, what these folks want to do there. I think the Plan Commission was appreciative of the work that they have done so far to clean up the place. There's still a long ways to go. I drove down there before this meeting, and it looks like they were trying to clean stuff out of the very back part of that. There was a bobcat in there, and they had like scrap metal or stuff that was piled outside. So, it looks like they were still working in there, but they have a ways to go. They have electrical problems, they may have some building code issues yet. It was made clear to them that while Plan Commission supports their efforts, that they need to get that stuff figured out before they were going to get a conditional use permit. Ultimately, Plan Commission voted to recommend denial, not so much on that, but because there was a technical deficiency in their application, that they didn't have the actual property owner sign the application. Someone had put their name in, but he didn't actually sign it. So, that was the reason that they recommended denial. I think the Plan Commission is open to these folks, you know, trying to get something going in there. They said they're attempting to buy the building, and so, the Plan Commission strongly recommended that they get themselves an attorney, so they do it right, and everyone understands what's going on. So, the way it sits now, Plan Commission recommended denial based on improper applications for both of them.
So, do you anticipate the Planning Commission to approve if that application came back correctly, even though potentially they have things they need to fix?
It would be a condition of the approval...
Okay.
...that everything would have to be fixed. And that was made clear to these guys, and that, you know, they were younger people, I mean, I was going to call them kids, and they're not kids, but, you know, they have a vision, and they have some experience in this, and they've worked hard so far. I think, you know, they've spent a lot of their own money in cleaning up that building, even though they don't own it. So, to their credit, you know, they've gone out on a limb to try to...
They really have.
...putting the place out, and they've, you know, they've succeeded to some extent, they just have a ways to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there a reason the owner isn't signing?
He was in Canada or out west, I can't remember, but he was out of town, is what they said.
Are they expecting he will sign?
They had, they gave every indication that he would. I don't know. I don't think most of you've seen one where he has signed, but.
No.
So we're disapproving these tonight? Is that what you're saying?
We're not, yeah.
They're nothing really, too.
Yeah, based on that, and based on that reason, I would.
The board needs to.
Yeah.
Address each one of them and either approve or deny them, correct?
Yeah. And I would make that the reason for denial.
Okay, for conditional use for Aaron M. Anderson, is there a motion?
Move to not approve the conditional use permit of Aaron M. Anderson to operate an auto repair slash restoration business at two thirty-five Monroe Street North.
Thank you.
He has a better reason than they're writing.
Do based on why?
Based on owner not signing proper documents.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll second that. I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the denial, say you're saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. C.
Move to deny the conditional use permit of Luke McKee to operate a car detailing business at two thirty-five Monroe Street North due to the owner not having signed proper paperwork.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say you're saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item thirteen, or no, thirteen, personal and finance committee recommendations, claims and approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the September twenty twenty-two nonrecurring claims of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-three cents?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments?
What are the big one numbers, Melissa?
Under the culture, recreation, education for the forty-three thousand, that includes the second half of the library payment. And then, under the capital outlay item for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, that is payments to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the thirty-five and the Wisconsin Street North projects.
All right.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none. See, that's a claim, so, Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. Okay, item B is amend the twenty twenty-two budget for the St. Croix Street North project, approval requested.
Move to approve ordinance number zero one dash two zero two.
They amend the twenty-two budget.
Oh, am I ahead of myself? Oh, there we go. Recommend to move move to amend the North Hudson of the Village of North Hudson's twenty twenty-two annual budget to record the St. Croix Street North Mill and Overlay Street project.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion? This, Melissa, there was just a.
It's just kind of some cleaning up bookkeeping work, because the the project was not put in the budget for this year, because when we did the budget last year, we didn't know the numbers. So this is the but the project has already been approved. This is just amending the budget to put it in there.
Am I correct that we approved it for eighty thousand, though, on three one? And do we need to change the amount?
I think with this new one, since the bid was.
Eighty-five, nine, sixty-two?
Right, we don't still don't have the exact amount. You can put it in for the amount it was approved for, the eighty-five, the bid number eighty-five. I have it in that.
So since this is over what we approved, does that affect the budget? I mean, did we budget properly for this?
Well.
Do we have it?
We didn't budget for it, because it wasn't put in the budget.
Wasn't at all in the budget?
To put it in. Right. And then the village portion will be paid with ARPA funds, which that it'll be enough to cover that. Once you cut it in half and take off the LREP funds that we'll get, then the other half will come from the special assessments. So you could amend your motion to say for that amount, the accepted bid for the eighty-five thousand, and then we would be covered.
Okay, to amending that previous motion to say the accepted bid for the project came in at eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second for the amending the motion, and then second for the new motion.
I got it.
And then, just to clarify, Melissa, even though it's not in the current budget with the with the LREP funding and the special assessment, and the thirty-three five hundred for ARPA, that there won't be an impact on on our twenty twenty-two budget?
No, because the village portion will come from the ARPA funds, which the board approved.
The thirty-three, thirty-three thousand, five hundred.
And the other portion that will be specially assessed, that kind of is like a loan against, I believe, the general fund until we get paid back for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's that's. Okay, the budget adjustment, let's see, it's spending, Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. C is adoption of order zero one twenty-two, amending chapter two's administration, article five, finance and taxation, section two dash three, five, three, special processing and claims approval requested.
So move, Stan.
So moved?
He's saying move.
Okay.
Move to the ordinance, yes. I'm not going to read all this, to be honest.
What he said.
An ordinance amending the missile code.
Yeah, that's not the first time.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because there was just, there's just, that's basically, okay, so we've been motion and second, it's a discussion.
Melissa, just give a quick update, please.
So this ordinance amendment relates to the next item on the agenda. We just needed to clean this up a little bit. The previous, my previous position, the previous person was the administrator treasurer. I'm the administrator clerk. The treasure, really, that first in subsection B, it should say just the treasurer, no matter what position may be combined. It's that's why it's taking administrator out of that. The treasurer's the one that issues. And then we took off checks and just said payment. So it covers however we may make that payment. And then down at the very bottom in fourteen, it should just say administrator. So positions are changed in the future. It shouldn't be affected by this.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the ordinance changes to all one twenty-two, signal by saying aye?
An ordinance.
Aye.
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 Sorry, I didn't, I thought ordinance, we might have had to do roll call vote. I'm sorry, I thought for ordinance, we did roll call vote. I could easily be wrong.
Well, I just.
Oh, you're good. Sorry.
No worries. Okay. Yeah, you can if you want.
No, no, you're good.
Okay, then D is use of purchase card for payments, claims, discussion approval requested.
Stan, a move to authorize the village treasurer to contact US Bank to obtain a purchase card that is to be used to pay recurring and nonrecurring invoices.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. I just want to say, I thought Nathan did an excellent job of explaining how this would work and the and the checks and balances that are going to be in place so that, you know, we're making sure that the purchase card isn't purchasing stuff that isn't doesn't shouldn't be purchased by the village.
Right.
So I thought he did a really good job on that. And and, you know, if we get a little interest on some of the purchases, that's a that's a plus, you know. So I think that's a good, good way to go. And there's a lot of places that are using it now. So that one should be. All in favor of any other discussion? Sorry.
So the thing is just you'll use it, you pay it off each month, and we don't have to worry about interest rates whacking us?
Yeah, so just like we do, the day after a board meeting, Nathan confirms all the claims were approved. Yes, he then he issues the checks. So the day after, he'll now just pay what he can with the card instead of, you know, by check. There'll be something that get prints out for Stan to review, me to review. So all the checks and balances are in place for that.
Okay, thanks.
And it's going to save my wrist a lot of check signing. That's. So, okay, so all in favor, say you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. E is purchase of portable backup generator, discussion approval requested.
Stan, I recommend the purchase of portable generator with costs not to exceed seventy-five thousand to be used out of the two-ten fund.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Go ahead, Patrick. Take the lead on this one.
You want to pop up and just give a little quick background, Patrick?
So I got two companies that gave me quotes. If I didn't put them in the packet, if you want them, I can certainly give them to you, print off copy, send them to you electronically. Doing a bunch of investigation on this generator, initially, I thought it would be a good idea to purchase brand new. And then, upon further research, that may not be our best option just because of how the new things work. And with all the smog emissions type of stuff that's on the engines, the one lift station that we have is the biggest, which we would have to size the generator for that. If we got a brand new one, when we when we would hook it up to the other ones, which are are smaller, would take less kilowatts, it would not work the motor hard enough, which would then plug up the particulates filter, and we would have a big cost in that, because then that would have to be taken back into Caterpillar to get that fixed. We, and and the other thought, or the other idea with the brand new one is there's a thirty to thirty-two week lead time on those, and nobody would give me any guarantees that that would be, that that would actually happen. It was just something that they said. So I, today's day and age, I don't trust any of that, because everything.
What are the generators going to be used for? What emergency?
The generators will, the generator will be used for all of our lift stations, and it will also be used for the new booster station that is up and running up in the ridges, that is, the villages, it's at twelve forty-five Vale Way. The the used generator that I found is it's actually at Caterpillar in Shakopee. It's a two thousand and six model, so it does not have any of the exhaust stuff on it. So I guess, like I told the finance committee, we could plug a toaster into it, and it wouldn't harm it. It would it would just, it would run like it's supposed to. So I think that would fit our needs the best. It has sixty-four hundred hours on it. We have a certified diesel mechanic, Matt Howell, and Bill, who knows quite a bit about diesel engines, too. I discussed it with them. We all felt that that's about half the life has been taken out of the generator, the used generator. They generally go from ten to twelve thousand hours without any kind of major overhaul. I don't believe that we, as in the village, will even come close to that in any of our times, or any of our time here, because basically, the most it'll probably get run is once a month, or, you know, once every three weeks, we'll have to start it and test it, make sure it runs everything. So my recommendation would be to to purchase the used generator from Caterpillar.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick?
Just going back to Kirk's question of, you know, is it, okay, it's going to be used for lift station and the booster, and it's just in when and if we had an electrical outage, correct, it would be an emergency tool? Okay, and do we have an idea of the cost for the used one? Did you say that already? Did I miss that?
Forty thousand.
Okay.
So I know we have a generator now. It doesn't work for these purposes. Is that correct?
We have a generator out here that's a stationary generator.
Okay, so this moves.
And it's that one out there is run off of natural gas, so it's actually piped right into it. This one would be diesel, so we could, it's on a trailer, has wheels. We can just hook it up to our truck and move it wherever we need it.
So by moving it, it will actually meet the needs of each one of the spots where we have need for a generator? So it's like one for three, or whatever it is, one for four?
For four, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
It seems like something that has been determined by people who know more than I that it is important and necessary. My concern would be that if we're using, planning to use ARPA funds for it, that perhaps, I don't know how big a hurry it is with it being used, maybe we need to act quickly, but.
It's not, it's not ARPA funds.
Oh, I thought this was going to be ARPA fund.
Two-ten.
In the motion, he said two-ten fund.
Okay, excuse me, my mistake. Thank you.
What is the two-ten fund, Melissa?
That's the sewer replacement fund. And I've been speaking with the DNR quite a bit over the last week, and they confirmed that we could use this fund for that.
Okay, so.
How much money do you have? How much money do we have in the account?
It's about five hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Thank you.
Patrick, we've had many discussions about a portable generator.
We have talked about it for a while.
Yeah.
It's just, and I guess I'll take the blame for this, I should have pushed it a little harder. Just that that station, it was like overnight, all of a sudden, well, we want it running. So it got up and running. So I kind of got caught off guard, which we we really should have one now.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree. And you've done your work, you found something new, which is going to work.
Yeah, there'll be nothing that causes more phone calls and issues than the lift stations not pumping.
That's right. And those bills get expensive.
Well, and didn't we used to borrow one or something? Is that correct? Did I?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if we call it borrow, but yeah.
Okay, I, we don't need to discuss it any further, but I think I remember that there used to be an opportunity for that, that is.
There was opportunity, but really, that's not the case anymore, because.
Right.
There were only two, so.
Okay, gotcha.
We were last on the list.
We've never had a backup generator like this. So a lift station goes down, we don't have anything.
Gotcha.
So it's a lot of scrambling for Patrick and public works.
Except for a fossil coming down and pumping stations.
Right, right. That's what we've had to do, because we haven't had a backup generator.
All right, thank you for all that background.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other questions, sorry, for them? Hearing none. Any other discussion? And being as a purchase, Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Melissa. Okay, number, now, use of ARPA funds to upgrade MSI accounting software, discussion, approval requested.
And a move to approve the upgrading of the current MSI accounting software to the newest version with the cost to not exceed four thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from the ARPA fund.
Thank you. Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion? Hearing none.
Well, so is it, this is the three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollar software, or four thousand five hundred dollar software, so that we've got accounting software that's up to date and functional for the purposes that our treasurer needs it?
Right. Yep, he did. And Nathan put together the issue statement to try and explain why it's needed and things. This was one of the two items that General Government Office was requesting to get kind of going on. And this was, yeah, this is something that he needs to upgrade his accounting software.
And I can't find the numbers right now, Melissa, but I'm guessing you know it. This is the initial expense, the install, and then there'll be a maintenance cost. And can you, for those listening, tell us what that annual maintenance cost is going to be?
I'm not.
I don't know why, but I'm not seeing that. Something in our packet had that breakdown.
I think it was covered, because otherwise, we usually wouldn't, this was the startup, the training, everything with it.
Okay.
It's like it's sixteen hundred.
So it's, we have our regular.
IT.
Okay, thanks.
Ongoing maintenance fee. I don't think it increased that at all. So whatever we currently budget for the maintenance fee should remain the same.
Okay, oh, right, gotcha.
Close to it, right.
It was one thousand six hundred, and it's already an existing fee, and that was not going to increase. Thank you.
It's not increasing by an additional.
I read all that before the weekend.
No, that's okay.
And I couldn't pull it back out of the cobwebs. I appreciate that.
Because Nathan, you know, needs this, it sounds like it's something he should have right now. I don't, I hate to delay it, but we really haven't prioritized our ARPA options that we've gotten from all the departments yet. We just took one off with the with the generator. And I know that we're. We just took one off with the, with the generator, and I know that we're taking off the Brown speech, because I read in the park minutes that they got the grant for that, which is great.
Yeah, we still have to pay for the other half of the...
Oh, so fifty percent? So, we, okay, so we, so, like I said, I don't want to not, not make this decision today, but I do think we need to prioritize our ARPA decisions with all the submissions that we've gotten from the different departments.
Right, and I think we've submitted that, and the other departments haven't.
We're in the process of doing that.
Right.
That was exactly...
And this is the two things that General Government was wanting to...
Excuse me, sorry, that was the point I was gonna make before too, is I just think it's becoming clear that we need to move forward with all that, those of us who haven't brought that forward to the board yet, we should be doing that, so that we can know what is all out on the table before we start giving up too much of the money. But I agree with assuming, you know, this isn't a ton of money, it seems very timely.
So, if we move forward, is the timing of upgrading this is no concern? Do you wait till the end of the year, or you just, you know, I'm asking there, as far as making sure there's no glitches in the software during the upgrade, during our budget time, or anything like that, I mean...
Are you saying if we wait on it?
Yeah, no, I want, I mean, if you move forward, move forward, if, sorry, just installation and so forth and so on. I mean, he has no concerns about installing it during what, you know, okay?
No, he's talked to them quite a bit about this, and he just got the updated quote to make sure, because the last quote he had received a while ago, so, no, he doesn't have any concerns with that.
Okay, good, just keep...
And this includes the training and everything to help him if there is an issue. And it's better to do it now than at the end of the year, when he's trying to do year-end.
Yeah, I just don't know how long it's gonna take, you know, it's curious.
It shouldn't take too long for this.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, and as a use of funds, so Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Tim, yes, okay. Thank you. Use of ARPA funds for purchase of digital document software, discussion and possible recommendation.
Yeah, just to update the board, the Finance Committee had decided to move this to the next month, because we wanted some more additional information about this actual software, maybe potentially a demonstration of what the actual software can do, or product can do, so at this point, we will not be making any motion on this, so...
All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, item fourteen, Public Works Committee recommendations, Brian, you got anything?
Stan, we met, but we have nothing to bring forward.
Thank you. Okay, Public Safety Committee, Tim?
Stan, we did meet, and we have nothing to carry forward at this time.
Thank you. Okay, welfare, Kirk?
We did not meet.
Really, with big garbage contract, all...
They're meeting next week.
Yeah, we got a little time in between.
All righty, then, next is park boards here, Kirk?
Yes, we did meet, and it's good that, we had the moving the park, again, another forty-plus people, it was really good, received. Neighborhood Watch has been absolutely fantastic helping us with that. We know that we did get approved for the grant. I don't have much more information about that, and then, we've had a little trouble with Ferry's Landing's bathroom. People have been trashing it, and it's, it's getting very, it's very disgusting, so, we're gonna close it down for a bit till we try to figure out what to do with it. It's, it's, yeah, I don't need to add more to it, it's not good. So, we're trying to come up with a strategy of how to not allow that to happen. But that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Stan?
Brian?
Before we move into close, could we have an update from Tim on how Pepperfest went?
Yes.
Sure, thank you. Being somewhat related to the park, and we had it in a village park. It was probably the most successful festival we ever had at this, in the history of Pepperfest. I mean, Saturday was just tremendous amount of people here, I think Chief can contest to that as far as the number of lines, but, yeah, we've exceeded any expectation that we thought we'd bring in, and we are moving, of course, with this thing back behind us here, so, there'll be more updates coming to you guys here shortly about what we're planning. But what we did this year certainly has, and we're not going to take away from our grants that we give out, we're not gonna take away from our working groups, but we are gonna proceed about taking care of what we have against this property behind us here, which is gonna lead to, of course, our next goal in completing that community center. So, yes, thank the community, thank the sponsorships, and thank all the people who worked. It was, again, the most successful Pepperfest we've ever had, so...
Excellent, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is... Each one separate.
Need a separate motion, yeah.
Okay. So, first of all, we're gonna convene in to close session, and we can, can I get to read the first, read them all three?
I think they're the same, but you can, if you read the first one, and then, you can essentially, it's the same language, but a different reason for the second one.
Okay, sure.
Speed things up a little bit.
That's, that's my goal. Okay, the board may convene in to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent lowercase g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the Village of North Hudson, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which is or is likely to become involved in. And the first one is for the Riverside Drive North Duplex Lift Station, is there a motion?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, and...
Do we need a vote on each one separate too, then?
Yeah, I was, I was in there here, the second one is not the same one, the second one's a different reason, so we'll have to read that one.
Okay, that's fine, I wasn't, you know, I mean, not foolish, I was just, you know, okay, so, the first one is, you know, all in favor of going into closed session for, to discuss Riverside Drive North Duplex Lift Station, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, and B is, the board may convene in to close session pursuant to Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, it's lowercase e, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to the water agreement. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. And, and then, all in favor of going in closed session for that reason, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And C is, board may convene in to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent lowercase g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the Village of North Hudson, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation it is or likely to become involved in with respect to the remaining EMS funds held by the City of Hudson. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Thank you, Brian, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. All in favor of going into closed for the litigation, the EMS fund with Hudson, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Thanks, Dan.